Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March the 9th, at the Rock Office.
Here.
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 Here. Be advised Commissioner Jimmy De Placido was excused. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief Livinggood.
Thank you Commissioner. Sergeant Roger Gillespie. Roger has been a police officer with the department since January 1994. During this time, he has served as a field training officer, a CISM, which is a Critical Incident Stress Management Team Member, and a hostage negotiator. In addition to numerous department commendations, in 2005, Roger received a Montgomery County District Attorney's Medal of Valor for a confrontation with an armed subject. In 2010, he was selected to be a member of the department's anti-crime team. In September 2011, Roger was chosen to join the Community Policing Division. As a division coordinator, his responsibilities include crime prevention, educating the public about crime trends. Roger is involved with the department's social media effort, as well as events like Coffee with a Cop and Facebook chats. He often does presentations for senior citizens. In fact, I've done a few of them with Roger. To alert senior citizens about the dangers that are lurking out there for them, as well as the problems and dangers to children from texting and driving. Roger believes that connecting with the community, especially with youth, is a vital part of police work. In addition to his work with the PAL program, he helped to develop Abington Police Explorers Program, one of the only police explorer programs in the area. In his off time, Roger enjoys spending time in the mountains with his wife Tammy and playing golf. Roger, you want to step forward, please? Sergeant Drew Kent. Drew joined Abington Police in 2009 and previously worked for a year in Philadelphia Police Department, serving in the 23rd District. Drew has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Rowan University, and is a proud member of the Abington Police Department Patrol Division. He has also served as a member of the Honor Guard, a SWAT officer, field training officer, and by the way, he's successfully trained nine officers since 2011, and they've all been trained extremely well. He's a range instructor, an oral interview board member, he's a police recruiting team member, and he's also on our commendation review board. Sergeant Kent resides with his fiancee Nicole in New Britton Township with her new baby son Drew Carter Kent, who I believe is with us here tonight, and was born on January 25th, 2017. Sergeant Kent, will you please step forward? I'd ask Judge Kessler to step forward, please, and administer the oath. If you would place your hand on the Bible, and then raise your opposite hand, and please repeat after me. After I say "I," state your name. "I."
"I, Roger Gillespie."
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
The Constitution and the laws
The Constitution and the laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
And the Township of Abington
And the Township of Abington
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of my office
The duties of my office
As a sergeant for Abington Township
As a sergeant for Abington Township
And will obey the rules and regulations
And will obey the rules and regulations
Policies and procedures
Policies and procedures
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department
Congratulations Sergeant. I'd now ask Tammy to step forward and pin the badge on Roger. Carefully. And Nicole, if you would step forward and pin the badge on Drew. Roger, we'll start with you. If you'd like to introduce your family and say a couple of words.
Thank you. I have with me my mother Jessie, my father Rex, who was a police officer with Laurel Morland Township for 29 years, my son Shane, my sister Colleen, and my father-in-law Dom, and my wife Tammy, who is my best friend and my rock, who I always rely on. I would like to thank everybody here, but we don't have time for that, so I'll just do it this way. I thank everybody here. You know, all my friends, all the people I've worked with, the commissioners, the department heads, my family, and I'm so grateful to everybody for your support, so I just want to say thank you.
Okay, this is going to be a bit. My mom is one of 11, and all of her siblings except the one who was able to make it here tonight. I have my uncle Rick, my uncle Ray, my cousin Tina, my aunt Joanne, my aunt Amy, my uncle Rob, my aunt Audrey, my uncle Warren, I'm going to name them all, my aunt Joyce, Uncle Artie, Uncle Phil, my cousin Jason, his wife T, my aunt Joyce's children are here, my cousin Tina's children are here, one of my friends from Philadelphia, Christopher, who told me about Abington Township, although we're in the police academy, so he played at the C very early. John Madera is here, his son. So I'd like to thank everybody as well, especially the other people in the police department that helped me get here, so I really appreciate it, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my fiancee Nicole.
It could have been a A's now because...
Could have been a very cold ride home.
Okay, we're going to continue on, and I turn it over to you, Chief Livinggood.
Thank you Commissioner. I'm going to introduce to you somebody that needs no introduction here, our chief Bill Kelly. Bill Kelly served as chief of police in Abington from December 1985 until January 2017. He came to Abington at a very difficult period in our department's history, and was able to create order out of chaos and pride out of bitterness. He completely turned our department around and told us a new way of doing police work. He introduced us to a number of new concepts, including the need to build partnerships with the community, create volunteer opportunities, and to work side by side with our community partners to make Abington an even better place to live and work. Largely through Chief Kelly's vision and initiative, we formed the Abington Community Policing Division, Abington Community Task Force ACT, Abington Police Athletic League, PAL, Citizens and Police Together, CAP, and many other initiatives. During his tenure in Abington, Chief Kelly also served in a leadership capacity in a number of other organizations, including president, Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, president of the Chiefs, Police Chiefs Association of Southeastern Pennsylvania, president of the Police Chiefs Association of Montgomery County, and chairman and founding member in 2001 of the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. We thank Bill Kelly for all that he has done for Abington Police Department and the citizens of Abington Township, and wish him well in his new position as chief of Criminal Investigations for the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General. And I would ask if Commissioner Schreiber would come down and make a presentation to Chief Kelly, please.
This is presented to you, Chief William J. Kelly, in recognition of your outstanding leadership, vision, and commitment to the Abington Township Police Department and the Abington community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a few words to say?
Thank you. The Commissioner asked me, I suppose you have a few words to say, and she gave me that look. I guess she knows me pretty well, as most of you do, and knew that I probably would have a few words I'd want to say. You just might have noticed that Chief John Livinggood just settled into his chair. He's been through this ritual before with me, but I do want to say a couple of things because Abington, to me, has been so much more than a job, more than a place to work. Obviously, this has become my home. Many years ago, I left my home and the area that I'd grown up in, and my entire family left it behind, and the department that I'd come up in and learned how to do policing and all of those things, and came to a place I'd never been at before. I knew absolutely no one. I came to a place where things were so bad that no one in the police department applied for the chief's job, and no one in the local area applied for it either. And so, Abington became my true home. And because I had no children of my own, Abington became my family, and certainly, Abington Police Department did. Now, I reminded myself, when you're doing this, Bill, whatever you do, don't look at Commissioner Myers, otherwise you're going to start feeling the sentimentality growing up. John, you've got a handkerchief, I know you do, you're closest to her, so we may need to use that there. But, and so, now that I'm leaving Abington after almost half of my lifetime being here, and leaving the department people I love, it is a time of great sentimentality for me, and something that I feel very strongly, and I just want to say a couple of words because I am truly appreciative. I'm truly appreciative, certainly of everyone in this room, certainly everyone that's gone through that police department next door with me and done some pretty exciting and amazing things together. But I first want to start with the board, because you know, regardless of everything else, it all starts with you. You're the one that set the tone, set the direction, and are the one that makes sure that we're either doing it right, or when the times, when they're not going so well, obviously, that falls on the board as well. I think you know, but I need to tell you, that you have so much to be proud of in our community, so much. It's taken for granted sometimes, but as you know, from the work that I've done, my consulting work that I've done all over Pennsylvania and around the country, and in Canada, and Europe, and the Caribbean, and all the people that I've met and the different things I've done, I've seen a lot of municipalities out there, a lot of organizations, and this is one that we can all be so proud of. You can't find another place that has more accreditations. Congratulations to our great fire service for that, and our members of our department. You can't find a place that has more awards and a recognition coming from all over, all over the state, all over the country, even international awards. For a small community like Abington, it's just so amazing, but it just points out the fact, this is truly a special place that we can all be very proud of, and certainly, board members, you especially can be, you and your predecessors can be. And needless to say, though, the responsibility is so great, to make sure that it continues along in that way, but I'm sure that you will do that. The great people that we have here, and especially our great president, my personal friend and great president Wayne Luker, whom you're in good hands, and I hope that in the future, that the organization and the community continues to go up as it has. I also want to say a couple of words to my colleagues here from the township side. Worked with some of you for so long, so many years, and it's been such a pleasure, such dedication, such amazing stuff. One of the things that we always marvel at is how people expect government to not work and people not care, and these folks obviously do. I obviously have to make a special word to our township manager, Michael LaFever. Michael, I've dealt with a lot of managers over a lot of years in a lot of settings, and there is no better, no finer, public administrator I've ever met than Michael LaFever. And he certainly deserves that round of applause. Thank you. And next, I want to talk about the great citizens of our community, and you know, we are blessed in that area too, because in so many communities, they don't have the volunteerism like we do in Abington. They don't have people coming out and wanting to help out and make it a better community like we do in Abington. So many of these programs, so many of these great programs for the kids couldn't happen if it wasn't for people coming out and volunteering their time to make them happen, and we have to do, as a community, to do things to keep them in mind and remind them about how much we appreciate it. You know, it takes so little to do that, but we need to do that because they're so valuable. And finally, I just want to say the words to the people that I've been able to work with for all these years in the police department. It's really a special place. They went through a tremendous amount before this era and went through a lot of things, as Chief Livinggood alluded to, but they did such marvelous things to bounce back and to make it such a great department, that it's just recognized and has a reputation all over the place, and that is so great. And it's just been an honor to work with them. I want to give special thanks in recognition to my successor, Chief John Livinggood, who's been a rock in the department all of those years and before that. I defy you to find anybody anywhere that has a better attendance record than John, who still is waiting to take his first sick day, figure that one out. That's amazing. Yeah, that's worth applauding, it really is. If that's not an example of dedication to the job and in great self-discipline, I certainly don't know what isn't. John, there have been so many times where you set a good example for me and helped me in making some of the many decisions we made together, and all the things that you said that this department accomplished during that time period, you were a part of every single one of them, so certainly, you have a right to be proud of all of that as well. The command staff has been amazing. You know that because so many of them have gone to be, go on and running other police departments. That tells you something about the caliber of the people that are coming out of this department. As you know, our fifth one just went on to become a chief of police in another municipality, and we have such great people, and I just want to say to the board, if I may take this just personal moment, to say, you've got two superstars coming up behind Chief Livinggood and Deputy Chief Pat Manway and Lieutenant Kelly Warner. You've got a lot of other talent behind them as well. It's an amazing group of people, but those two people, you need to keep them here in Abington, whatever you can do to keep them in Abington, because if you don't, you're going to be losing some real talent that is really at the top of the list out of all those people out there. And so, I'd like all of you to please give me a hand for the great command staff of this police department, they've loved us for so long. And finally, the officers that do the job. You know, the people say to me all the time, oh geez, I'm sure you get a lot of complaints and never hear good things about your officers, so I'm going to give you something nice about it, and I kind of smile and I say, well, thank you very much. But the fact of the matter is, far more than anything, I get compliments about the officers in Abington. The way they treat people, the way they go out of their way to do great things for people, to help them out in all kinds of situations above and beyond the job. So ladies and gentlemen, in conclusion, I just want to say, it has been my pleasure and honor to be part of this community, this township, but especially to be part of the men and women in the Abington Township Police Department who deserve all of the credit, and I hope you'll help me give them that credit right now. Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to make those remarks. I appreciate it.
Thank you Chief. Thank you very much, sir. Chief Livinggood, did you have anything else to bring forth?
No, you can just have us hold pause to get our guests out of the room.
Okay, Nathan, we'll take a two-minute recess. Okay, we'll reconvene. At this point, I'd like to call Vice President Stephen Crime for approval of the minutes.
Thank you President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting of February 9th, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved to second, if all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. At this time, I'd like to open a meeting for public comment on agenda items only, comments from the public. And if you would please adhere to our three-minute speaking rules, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Laurel Lane, 1431 Bryant Lane. So one of the things on the agenda just for advertising is the zoning rewrites and I, the draft zoning ordinance...
Excuse me, Ms. Lynn, could you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Sure. The draft zoning ordinance, you need some of my hearing aids. Draft zoning ordinance that is to appear in just a few days, and I had asked and got zero reply if we could get a simple list of the main features that are changing, things like the little cottages that in-law suites can become in backyards, that once the in-laws are no longer there, become either vacant or rental units. So, things like that, a list of those things. When we were doing the rewrites, we were assured everybody would understand them, there would be plenty of time for everybody to understand them. There were endless, endless hour upon hour meetings, nitpicking over little things, and from all of the things that I saw that went back to your constituents, there were not the details of what was decided on each section so that people could have input. And now, in a few days, you're going to do the presentation, but there's no list. I've asked my commissioner, I've asked you, Mr. Chairman, I have asked Manager LaFever. I would like to see if we can get a simple list of the major changes to that. And there is a PowerPoint online, but it's useless, there's nothing you can get from that. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Lubavitch rental. Again, I suggested that you keep that short and look for opportunities for others, and yet, you're still going to go long with a seven-year lease. This is township property that residents are paying, this doesn't even pay for a portion of the heat, okay? So, I think the heat was something like $60,000, so $20,000 isn't even, you know, a small piece of what it costs to maintain that. If you are going to take the money to maintain it out of residents' pockets, please find a use that is very inclusive of all of the residents in this township, and you can do that by tonight, amending that motion, making it a shorter lease, and allowing yourselves some time to look for some other uses. The last thing I want to say, just very quickly, is I just listened to a whole thing about all the awards. Eleven years ago, when I came here, I also loved to see people getting awards. Since then, whenever the groups that I was working with came with a problem, and we publicly said, we have worked and worked and worked behind the scenes to get something done, and we mentioned who the problem was, that person got an award. And the accreditation and the gold accreditation that was had, they had a long list of some very disturbing things that were not fully investigated at all and got accredited anyhow. So, I have very little faith in awards, and as we see on the national level, everything's wonderful, wonderful, hooray, hooray, even though it's not. So, we have some things here, as I said before, it would be better if that was all behind the scenes, but the complaint form is only this big. There's no place here to complain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If there are none, we'll move into our formal agenda, and at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hecker, Director of the Public Works Department.
Thank you President Luker. The Public Works Committee has two items of business this evening, and before I read PW1, I will call my fellow commissioners' attention to the two handouts that accompany the materials here. They are relating to PW1, which is a bid award for a number of public works materials, which I'll read now. And so, this is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bids and enter into contracts with the following companies for the purchase of materials as shown. And this is Kimong Supply Corporation, signpost material portion, and this is items 1 through 6, number 8 through 15, and item number 26. Garden State Highway Products, item number 7, and items 16 through number 25. Garden State Highway Products Aluminum Blanks Material Portion, complete. Garden State Highway Products Reflective Roll Goods Type III Material Portion, complete. Garden State Highway Products Reflective Sheeting and Sign Faces, finished signs, type III Material Portion, complete. Garden State Highway Products Reflective Sheeting and Sign Faces Type III Material Portion, complete. Ennis Paint Incorporated Hot Tape Pavement Markings Portion, complete. And Garden State Highway Products Miscellaneous Items Portion, complete, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. PW2, and this is a motion to have the proper officials enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Cheltenham Township for maintenance on eight traffic signals that are shared intersections with Abington Township, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes the Public Works Committee agenda this evening.
Thank you Commissioner Hecker. Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you Mr. President. Tonight, we have several items. First, CE1 subdivision, SD 1701 Nancy Pozel, 1060 Mill Road Circle, Riddle, PA. This is a motion to approve the subdivision application of Nancy Pozel, owner of the property located at 1060 Mill Road Circle, Abington Township. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing property of 4.26 acres into two parcels. Lot number one will consist of 1.71 acres in size and is proposed to be deeded to the Township of Abington as passive deed restricted open space. Lot number two is proposed to be 2.55 acres in lot area and will contain the existing single-family dwelling, swimming pool, and tennis court. No additional development is proposed to either of the two proposed lots. The property is zoned within the R1 Residential District in Ward Number 2 of the Township of Abington, and this motion is subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? If there are none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, if you'll indulge me, I'm sorry, it's Mrs. Pozel. I was corrected on that last time and forgot, and I wanted to express our thanks for that donation as well.
donation as well. Next, we have CE2. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 2131, Chapter 162, zoning, Article 3, establishment of zoning districts related to the Medical Marijuana Act. And since this is a public hearing, I will turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for ordinance number 2131, and first I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
So yesterday, at our Montgomery County Planning Commission meeting, we had a presentation on the state law, the medical marijuana state law. So I asked for the copy of the PowerPoint presentation and figured it'd give everybody a good primer on the state law. I've pared it down from what the presentation was that was in front of the planning commission. So I'll go through that, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but I'm sure Mark, who went to a seminar up at Lafayette College and also the solicitor, could probably answer questions. So the first is that the state law split up the state into six regions. We're in region number one, which is the southeastern region, and there are -- out of all of the permits that were opened up in the first -- through the state law, the southeast region will get 10 dispensary permits and two grow processing permits. The total permits that will be issued under the state law at this current -- initially was 25 grow processor facilities and dispensaries, there would be 50 of them. However, in Phase 1, they're only going to be issuing 12 process growing and processing plants and 27 dispensary permits. And the permit period is between -- is currently going on now, or the application period is going on now until March 20th, so about a week and a half. And as it says up there, the Department of Health is expecting about 900 applications. One thing that we should recognize is that with the dispensary permit, whoever receives that permit is allowed to open up three dispensaries. And in that, they have to open up the first dispensary within their home county, so wherever the business is located or wherever the corporation is located, they have to open up their first dispensary called the flagship in their county. And then the other two can have to stay within the same region that the permit has been issued. So if you go back to originally, when we talked about, just a couple slides ago, 27, it would be 27 times three dispensaries would be allowed under the first phase. In Philadelphia, there'll be three dispensary permits issued, and in Montgomery County, there'll be two, and then in the -- you'll see in the rest, which are Berks, Bucks, Chester, Delaware, and Lancaster, will get one dispensary permit per county, and those allocations based on population. These are some of the lawful uses for medical marijuana that are listed in the state law, and you can peruse through them, but they have all been diseases that have shown benefits by use of some of the extracts through the medical marijuana -- through medical marijuana processing. The law only allows certain types of forms of medical marijuana materials in the ways of pills, oils, topical formulas, and you can see some of the others, but the plant based leaf form is not going to be allowed. It all is -- they only have -- they can only produce certain types of material. It can't -- there's not -- smoking's not allowed. Any kind of rounded up of portions of the plant and sold for edibles is not allowed. The only things -- it's specific in the law about all the different things that are allowed, and it is very specific about what's not included. So the process works, the patient who receives -- has to receive a certification from their practitioner. That practitioner possesses an -- has to give them a validation card, and that comes from the Department of Health. There also are such things as caregiver validation cards, so somebody who's taking care of a patient who can't apply for or get the medication themselves can designate a caregiver. The taxing -- the tax revenue on the medical marijuana is on the grow and processing portion of the process -- of the overall process. They tax the material coming out of the grow processing facility's 5%, and then there is no further tax, state tax, related to this law. There's no further tax on the dispensary end of it. So the person going in to get medical marijuana material is not paying tax on that. The tax has already been paid by the grow processor facility. That doesn't include business privilege taxes or anything like that. It's just this is -- that's the only tax that's slated through the state law. This is a quick slide about how they divvy up the tax revenue, how they're expecting to divvy up the tax revenue within the state. This is their initial percentages, and you can see some of it's for research, some drug abuse prevention and counseling. The -- as I said, the application period is until March 20th. One thing that's key to the township is the first line in that second bullet point, which is a support -- a support letter from the township showing that any facility or any location that they're applying for, because I do have to designate a specific location for either a dispensary and for a grow facility, that they do get a letter of compliance or acceptance from the township that where they're putting it will meet some type of -- will meet their land use laws. Quick shot of what a grow facility could look like. So the growing facilities are expected to be 10,000 square feet or larger. I can tell you that they're going to be closer to 40, in some cases, 60,000 square feet. More than half the facility has to be allocated to cultivating plants, which means either the mothering aspect, the vegetative state, or the flowering state, which is the three stages before it goes into the drying and curing process. The lab and processing is to 5 or 15%. There's some comments here about water usage, which is expected to be fairly extensive, and encouragement's about trying to use recycle -- recycling water within the facility. This is a quick example of an adaptive reuse grow facility up in New Hampshire. They converted a factory. In the grow facilities, there's a whole -- there's a whole portion of the law that talks about security. It's a huge aspect of the state law. It talks about security and control of the employees. It talks about security within the building and access points into certain portions of the facilities and who can -- and how access is controlled, and the actual application requires that a full security plan is a part of the application. There is no allowance for outdoor growing. All the growing has to be done indoors and secured and actually out of sight of the public. So if they were to have greenhouses, wherever the greenhouses are, they have to have screening. This is some of the fees. There's 10 -- you can read through this. It's $10,000 nonrefundable initial application fee. With a grow facility, they have to give a $200,000 permit fee. That would be returned if they don't get a permit. They also have to show a fair amount of capital, $2 million in capital and at least $500,000 in cash deposited. Quick definition of a grow facility, not very detailed, but the law talks about location and has to be allowable in industrial zoning districts, and as I said there, comply with the same applicable requirements applicable to any industrial zoning district. Another look at a grow facility. Not sure where that one is. Dispensaries are pretty much just like storefronts. They can be standalone buildings. They -- one interesting thing is, there's a lot of regulations within the state law about how they can advertise and what the naming of the facilities are. There are certain names and words that they can't have in there, which actually suggest marijuana and cannabis. They can't have pot leaves as part of the emblem. You know, there's a whole bunch of regulations on what they can't do as far as the marketing or naming of the facility. These are some of the financial requirements for a dispensary, slightly smaller, actually, a lot smaller. Dispensaries, so grow facilities and dispensaries can't be on the same property. So a grow facility is purely just a grow facility. They supply to the dispensaries. Dispensary has to be off-site, not in the same location, and one of the laws -- and the law also specifies it can be -- it has to be 1,000 feet away from a property line of a public, private, parochial school, or daycare center. Dispensary, you have to have a physician or pharmacist on-site, and the loading and unloading of the material coming in has to be out of sight and brought directly into the dispensary. Dispensary is similar to the grow facility, except in this situation, it has to be in any commercial district. It has to meet all the same requirements as any kind of retail location or pharmacy location in a commercial district. That bottom line should say 1,000, not 100. These are some of the temporary regulations that have been put forth and have been codified in the state law, and that's basically it.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Klein. Any comments from commissioners? Okay, comments from staff?
Mr. President.
Yes, hold on, please. Commissioner Farron.
Sorry. This is actually -- I don't know, I guess this is directed at Commissioner Klein just because of the background knowledge. With the zoning rewrite that we have going on, with that new industrial area that we have, is this -- would that align with that, or is that something that would prohibit this?
No, it would align with it. The way the ordinance that we're considering today would allow the grow facilities only in the SI district. So we would have to -- we're passing this before the zoning -- the new zoning ordinance is being passed. So those names would get changed over through some kind of action in the zoning ordinance.
And even if they were located in those SI districts, they would still have to be a thousand -- the grower -- the growing area would still have to be 1,000 feet away from any of those proper--
Our ordinance, yeah, they would have to be 1,000 feet away from a public, private, or parochial school, daycare.
And if I'm misreading, just because it's so quick, is that also applied to the dispensaries? Or just -- so 1,000 feet for both locations away from--
Our ordinance, in state law, it doesn't actually specifically specify for a grow facility. It only specifies it for a dispensary.
But we're going to have it for both?
We're going to have it for both, in our ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we know offhand if there -- how much space that reduces this possibility to?
Well, let me step back a second.
And I'm not going to put you on the spot like this.
I'm thinking ahead. So the way our ordinance is written now, and this is something that, I mean, maybe the solicitor would like to answer, but the way our ordinance is written right now, there are some discrepancy in the requirements in the ordinance. It says, "The state law only requires it to be 1,000 feet from a private, parochial, or public school or daycare center." Our ordinance added in residentially zoned properties, community centers, parks. That may be it. The problem with that is, there's no place in the township that would allow that -- that would meet that requirement. So there's something that we're going to have -- I mean, we've talked about this recently, myself, Manager LaFever, something we were going to discuss tonight.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Commissioner-- Commissioner speak. I should make a brief comment. I guess Commissioner Klein clarified this, that the 1,000-foot -- the 1,000-foot restriction from public, private, or parochial schools or daycare centers, that comes -- just to clarify, that comes from the state regulation.
It does.
That does come directly--
Only for dispensaries.
Only for dispensaries, right. And you said we're--
We're putting it in for the grow--
For the grow facilities as well. That was actually the only -- I've gotten actually a whole bunch of feedback about this from residents. That was the only question, because I think there were some people who thought that that maybe was a little excessive, but obviously, it comes from the state law, so that's out of our -- that part is out of our hands. But I just want to say, the response I've gotten from residents about this has been, not only overwhelmingly positive, it's been 100% positive. I've gotten no negative feedback, not even any concerns. Everyone who's given me feedback, it's a lot of people, completely in favor of this ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner Zepone.
This is to our solicitor. Mike, are we being mandated by the state to do this, so we have no say in this?
Essentially, Commissioner Zepone, yes. The legislature has made it very clear that a municipality may not prohibit these uses within their municipality. You cannot prohibit it either by an outright ban or by essentially the issue that we have discovered that we are running into here, by creating certain restrictions that, in effect, prevent anyone from being able to use this business or start one of these businesses, excuse me. So to answer your question, the legislature has made it clear that municipalities may not prohibit this use within the municipality, and they have to provide for it somewhere in the municipality.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I'll call.
I'm sorry, Michael. Okay, I was going to -- okay, Mark and the solicitor, you want to continue?
If I could, President Luker, just to follow up on Commissioner Zepone's question, we have, in a review of the ordinance, in a review with Mr. Panikow, we have determined that our ordinance does, in fact, prevent this use in the township because of the additional 1,000-foot restriction that we have put in through residential zone properties. Originally, when it was done, we did not anticipate that that was going to happen, but after further review with Mark and further review with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, it has been determined that the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight does act as an outright ban. So we are going to suggest an amendment to the -- we're going to suggest that one amendment to the ordinance, and then we're going to suggest a second amendment to the ordinance also to clear up some confusion in the ordinance and also to make sure that we are consistent with the proposed zoning rewrite. And before I go over that with all of you, as you are aware, our code does not currently have a provision for this use, which as of -- until 2016 was not a legal use in the Commonwealth. The proposed ordinance allows dispensaries by right in the town commercial, special commercial, planned business, and mixed-use districts, subject to the requirements set forth in the ordinance. As an example, they have to have proof of registration with the Department of Health. They have to have the submission of their security plan. It would also allow grower processor by right in the suburban industrial district, subject to the requirements set forth in the ordinance. Again, proof of registration with the Department of Health, a minimum lot size of two acres, submission of a security plan, fencing around the facility are all required, and the proposed ordinance implements parking requirements related to the two uses. In addition to go a little bit beyond something that Commissioner Klein had said about the number of grower processors, there's a little portion of the ordinance which hasn't been completely -- not the ordinance, excuse me, the act, that hasn't been completely flushed out by regulations yet, but the eight -- there are certain classes of medical centers in Pennsylvania, and I believe that there are eight of them, and the eight medical centers in Pennsylvania will also be eligible for a separate grower processor license to use for research and also for creating the product for their own patients. And as of yet, those guidelines haven't been established, but there could end up being more grower processors in a region than originally anticipated because of the eight medical centers. In addition to the problem that's been referenced, that by adding the 1,000-foot residential, that we are creating a de facto prohibition on this, which we are going to suggest that the 1,000-foot restriction on residential be removed, and we just then go back to what the state law is requiring. We are also suggesting that we clarify the issue regarding daycare centers. The Act says you cannot be within 1,000 feet of the daycare center. The current Abington zoning ordinance treats adult daycare center and child daycare center identically. It uses -- they are in the same category. Use E3 says adult slash-- Use E3 says adult slash child daycare center. The proposed zoning amendment will break down daycare center into five, I believe, five different, four different categories. Adult daycare center, child daycare center, daycare home, which is in a family daycare, and a daycare home group. What we are suggesting is that the ordinance be amended on Section C, where it describes a medical use C37C, where it indicates a daycare center. We are proposing and suggesting that the language should now read, and I'll just jump into the middle of it, "From the nearest point on the property line of a residentially zoned property or parcel containing a public, private, or parochial school," and it says daycare center, we are suggesting that it should now read child daycare center as defined and regulated by the Department of Health. When we look at the legislative history for the Medical Marijuana Act, it is clear to us at least that the legislature was talking about child daycare centers and not adult daycare centers. The legislation was reviewed by various state departments. Department of Corrections was one, Department of Education was another, and the Department of Health was also mentioned, who was given review over this act. Department of Health is who licenses and regulates child daycare centers. The Department of Aging is who regulates adult daycare centers. So in light of the fact that our ordinance is going to distinguish between various types of daycare centers if approved, and in light of the fact that it seems clear from the legislative history that the legislature intended this restriction to be for child daycare centers and not for adult daycare centers, we are suggesting that that be the second change that be made to this ordinance. It is clear to us that with both of these changes, that this would constitute a substantial amendment, which would require re-advertising and would require a hearing at a second date after it is re-advertized. And it is also clear that the current Abington zoning code requires that when any amendment is made after advertising, that it needs to be re-advertized. So under those circumstances, we are suggesting those changes be made, and we are suggesting that, well, then obviously the ordinance will need to, will need to be re-advertized. For anyone who may question as to, Commissioner Klein said, the deadline to submit applications to the state is March 20th, and what happens to those individuals who may have an application in, and the ordinance is changing and they don't have time to, will they be denied on that basis? The law allows that if you either have your zoning approval, or there is a likelihood that you're going to get your zoning approval, and anyone submitting an application or who has already submitted an application, if you make these changes this evening, they will be covered under the pending ordinance doctrine. So once, if you authorize advertisement of these changes tonight, that, the pending ordinance doctrine will control for anyone who has already submitted an application or is going to submit an application in the next couple of days.
Question to Markman?
I guess with that in mind, the appropriate thing would be for someone to make a motion to basically amend the ordinance pending the advertisement.
Can you hold any motion until I ask a question?
No, I'm just asking a question about the motion.
Are we leaving in place of worship, public park?
No, I think what we're suggesting is that those will come out, and the changes is that we will mirror the state law and not the additions that we put in. Because again, as we look at it with the additions that we put in, we are creating a de facto complete prohibition on these facilities within Abington because didn't necessarily, we didn't necessarily realize it until the planning commission was able to look at it. You can't really go a thousand feet anywhere in Abington without running into a residential parcel, a place of worship, a public park, a community center. There's a lot of them.
But not a flower shop.
The key is, the way the zoning ordinance is written, it's from property line. It's not even actually from the building.
It's from the property line and not the building line, and so it does, it does create a de facto prohibition. So we are suggesting that that all come out, and then the change defining what the daycare center would also be in. So what would be appropriate, Commissioner Markman, is a motion to amend the ordinance as I've just suggested, and then to re-advertise unless there are any other proposed amendments.
Do we do that in the public hearing or after the public?
You would do that after the public.
Okay. I have a question.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Sorry. So in other words, we really don't have any choice. I mean, we have to do with the state's tellings.
Yes.
So.
Our ordinance, from, our ordinance is from, Michael, you can-
I liked it. Actually, I liked it.
But our ordinance really codifies the state law.
I'm sorry?
Our ordinance really just codifies the state law.
Right. I liked it, I liked the way it was written before, but that's okay.
Worked for me.
Mr. Solicitor, I have a question. If we're not, if we're not able to prohibit the use based on state regulation, does that mean that this automatically waives any application for variance?
No. They still have to comply with zoning as we're putting in here, and then any other zoning that may apply to this, this particular use. Parking, for instance, you still have to have, meet the parking requirements. You still have to be less than a thousand feet away from a school or some things along those lines. So some of them will still have to go through the zoning process if they don't, if they don't comply. But what we cannot do is just create an outright prohibition on the use.
Thank you.
Or, again, create an ordinance that has a de facto prohibition.
So our ordinances are still safe?
Yes.
Or still effective? Okay. Commissioner Kalanowski and then Commissioner Bowman.
Okay, thank you. So at our next hearing, would we be able to see the areas that these dispensaries will be allowed to be?
I think that can probably be done. I think the planning commission could probably provide us with that information, if not even the township code department.
Yeah, we had worked with the county planning commission when we started looking at it. Mark and I contacted Mike Narcoich, and they were able to do through their mapping, because they already had our zoning map from the zoning ordinance, and they were able to map all the radiuses based on the way it's written currently, so we can have them pull back the, pull back their analysis to just include.
I think that would be a great idea. Because, you know, I think we're gonna get not in my neighborhood situation, no matter S or F response, so yeah, that would like to be there, but it's gonna go back and forth.
Well, I mean, I think it's fair to say. I mean, this is, this is no different than a pharmacy. I mean, you have pharmacies that have a whole lot less control, security requirements than what is written in the state law, and they're selling opioids or storing opioids. Actually, in most pharmacies, they're storing them outside of shelves, they're not even necessarily lost up, or actually, I think they're required to be. But there's more security and more provisions in tracking the medical marijuana material than there is in any pharmacy that we have in the township currently. And the township, I mean, the opioid use, as we've all been hearing, is a greater issue than marijuana use.
Thank you for that information.
Commissioner Bowman?
And it really seems clear, I guess, that you can't really attach any special conditions to these facilities, because it would be against the very state statute, right?
Correct. We cannot add requirements on, to the facilities themselves, and that is only controlled by the Act and by the Department of Health. All we're allowed to do is regulate the zoning.
So you could actually change the zoning to only allow it in one particular area in the township, as long as you had one area where it was allowed?
Correct.
So you could say, I'm only gonna allow it in, you know, M1 zoning?
Correct, as long as you're, as long as you're providing for it somewhere within the township. And I hate to use this example, but in some of the discussions I've had with other municipal solicitors, this is an appropriate example. You have to provide for adult uses. If you can find a place in the township, one single place, as long as you provide for it, then it's not exclusionary zoning. So, but that is, that's similar to what's happening here. You have to provide for it. You could limit it to one area, but you'd have to also have a rational basis for why you're limiting it to one area, because I think Commissioner Klein's point is the one that the legislature has made also, is that these should be treated similar to a pharmacy. And so that's, you'd probably get that sort of challenge if you attempted to just put it on the far, far end of the municipality or in one, one small area.
Mark, did you have a comment?
No, we're prepared to make the revisions you want made, and we'll come back and see you again once we advertise it.
I have another question. What if an applicant has already made application, and now you're gonna have a change in the-
Fortunately, the three applicants that have submitted for a zoning compliance letter, all three have been denied, on the grounds that there's an existing daycare that's already there. Now, we're gonna go back and revisit one of those. Two of the facilities are out because they don't comply to the state regulations of Act 16. And the third one that was out was out strictly because of our proposed ordinance. So we'll go back and take a look at that, because the daycare that took them off the table is an adult daycare.
So where is that, where was that application made?
1600 Block of Old York Road, I think so. 1629, I believe.
What is that? Is it a-
It's a vacant building right now. It was a, an office building for manufacturer's rep.
Oh, okay, I know.
Another question. Were all three applications, you said, were all three, all three were denied? Were all three appealed?
No, two of the individuals that received denial letters wrote back to us for reconsideration, and one of those two, the one on Old York Road, will reconsider based on the definition of the word daycare. The other facility, I'm sorry, there's a daycare, is an existing child daycare that's 300 feet away. I can't make that daycare disappear.
And we do not, we do not have the ability to change that, because the state law is clear regarding the distance from a daycare center. And again, as we believe, from looking at the legislative history and looking at the fact that it's regulated by the Department of Health, that this is a child daycare. So this one facility that Mark is referencing, they can appeal to the zoning hearing board, but they're, they're not gonna win, because it's what the state law says. And I would suspect that in those instances, where a municipality zoning hearing board decides to grant a variance and allow someone to go within a thousand feet of a child daycare, I would suspect that the Department of Health would probably get involved in those instances, but we don't have that guidance yet, so.
So any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Markman?
Just one quick question, that I'm not sure that I'm completely understanding. Is the dispensary directly related to the grower/processor? So if you, if you permit a dispensary, do they have to have a growing processing in the same municipality?
They do not.
And can one growing processor service many different dispensaries?
My understanding is that they can.
Okay.
And my understanding is that the grower/processors who are going to be associated with the medical centers, that in addition to using it for research and using it in their own facilities, are going to be able to sell some of their product to dispensaries in their region.
So it's likely that we're going to get more applications for dispensaries than for growing processor?
Correct.
And obviously, growing processing takes, is an enormous amount of space to do that.
Correct. And money, that's correct also. And that's why I think you're seeing that a lot of the grower/processors that we're seeing in other municipalities are associated with the, are associated with the medical centers, because there's just that amount of money there.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? Any comments from residents? Sir, could you step up to the mic, give your name and address for the record, please? And we have a three-minute speaking limit?
Fred Skilton, Maplewood Avenue, Ward 10. If what I'm hearing then is, we have to have a place for both at least one dispensary and one grower to find a place in Abington Township, to meet the requirements of the law?
That is correct. We have to provide for this use within the township.
Okay, and-
Well, let me, we have to provide for the use. We don't have to actually show them where to be or give them a location or anything. They still have to go through the application process.
No, but they, yeah, but they, if they say, well, we can't go in the avenue because it's a thousand feet for both dispensaries and growers, then that's in violation of the law, so you'd have to change that law to accommodate them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, in essence, aren't you, by changing the distance, focusing where the grower and the dispensaries can be? But you need at least one to comply for each one of them?
You have to provide for this use within the township. And when I say this use, I mean, medical marijuana, both grower/processor and dispensary. You have to provide for that use within the township. As I indicated before, in I think response to Commissioner Markman's question, the idea that we can find one small little sliver of the township and say it's permitted there, we do not believe that that would survive a challenge because of the way the legislation is written and the way the regulations are being formulated and from the legislative history.
So how many spots do you have to reserve for growers and dispensaries?
We don't have to provide any spots. We have to provide for the use within the township in certain districts. And as we've indicated before, the legislature and from the legislative history, it appears as if they do want these to be treated in a similar way to pharmacies.
The thousand feet for the dispensaries remains, correct?
Yes.
From the uses that are in the, that are in the state law, yes.
Do you know of any two-acre tracts in Abington?
You're asking the wrong guy.
There are a couple of two-acre tracts in a suburban industrial district. There are a few tracts that would meet the requirement, but they're currently occupied pieces of land.
You get it, E. Okay. You know, a thousand feet is less than two tenths of a mile, and I would hope that we would be as restrictive as we humanly can be, you know, since we're being sort of forced to have this in our township.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
The hearing is closed, and the motion to adopt ordinance number 2131, amending Chapter 162, zoning Article III, establishing a, of zoning districts related to the Miracle Marijuana Act, is listed on the agenda, and I say move.
Mr. President, I think the appropriate motion here is to amend, is to amend the ordinance as-
Can you give us just the sections, and I'll secondly say them for the-
Well, I think what Mark and I, I think what Mark and I wanna do is, we wanna make-
I haven't written them down.
Okay, if you wanna do it, then fine.
Then do it.
Yeah, I was writing it down. So the amendment that we're talking about is to amend the C37 use for dispensaries, Section, subsection C, to add the word child in front of daycare, and to eliminate the words residentially zoned properties, place of worship, public park, or community center.
One change, Commissioner, if you could. I believe the solicitor recommended, as defined by the Department of Health, if the daycare-
Yeah, child, to add the word child in front of daycare and then daycare center, as defined by the Department of Health.
Defined and regulated by the Department of Health.
Right. And then we wanna do the same, we wanna do the same amendment to the D18 use grower, grower/processor, except that would be subsection D.
Yes.
And that would be the same. And that would be the same changes in there. And that amendment, I would offer that amendment and re-advertising of the ordinance.
Second.
That's a motion?
That's my, that's a motion to amend.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. So, it's a motion to amend the ordinance as suggested, and to re-advertise. Okay? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That wasn't too bad. And at that point, I turn it back to Commissioner Sanchez to continue on protocol.
Thank you, Mr. President. That brings us to finally CE3, zoning ordinance update. This is an announcement for information only. The Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington have scheduled a public hearing for Monday, March 13, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom, to discuss the proposed updates to the zoning ordinance of the Township of Abington. The proposed zoning ordinance update is a comprehensive rewrite of the current zoning ordinance that was adopted in May of 1996. And again, that's for information only. And that concludes the business of the Code Enforcement and Land Development Committee this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez.
I make one comment about the meeting on Monday. So, it was mentioned, the township webpage does include, does include the videos from when we went in front of the Planning Commission, and in front of the Board of Commissioners back in '15. And it also includes the PowerPoint presentations, which went into detail the changes. What we'll be going through on Monday is the, is the recommendations that were passed by the Board of Commissioners for edits to the 2000, I forget what the date of it was, the 2015 or '14 ordinance, and to the new ordinance that we have now. So, but that information is on the township website.
Good question.
Commissioner Heckler. So, I was wanting to get clarity about the purpose of Monday evening. So, it says we're to discuss. Is there a vote being taken Monday evening?
So, we have, the, the ordinance that was advertised was the 2016 ordinance, which was the revisions based on the board recommendations back in 2015. Since the 2016 ordinance was, was drafted, there are, there are a few changes which we will be going through on Monday. We laid it to the sign ordinance, the administrative section of the, of the ordinance, and also one minor map change that has been brought to Mark's attention from Commissioner DePlacido, that we are going to suggest be incorporated, therefore would require us to continue the hearing from Monday. So, we don't anticipate a vote, other than to continue the hearing, and have another hearing, which will take up a ordinance, which will include those other items. But all that will be explained in steps. So, with, with Michael from Montgomery County Planning Commission, and myself, and Mark, and Larry.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Klein.
And again, that hearing is for Monday, March 13, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom.
Mr. President, may I ask Commissioner Klein one question? Do we have any anticipation when that second hearing might be? Any kind of ballpark?
Mark, Mark and I talked about that this, earlier this evening. There are, he's going to send out an email tomorrow with a, with a series, or with a few dates that he got from Maria, that are available in April. And we're going to get a consensus. And once we have that consensus, hopefully that'll happen before the Monday meeting, where, and then we will, we will designate that date at that time.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Do we plan to videotape these, or...
Yes. Sorry?
These are, okay, good. Got the, we're going to videotape them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nathan's already been talked to.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, is that concluded, Code Enforcement?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Director Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, President Luker. We have three items this evening. PS1 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2137, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article III, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 13, 2017, at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to appoint candidate Morgan Pef from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the position of probationary police officer, provided she successfully completes the background, physical, and psychological tests, and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training Appointment will be effective July 5, 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And PS3 is a motion to approve an employment, an employment contract with the police lieutenants, incorporating the same employment benefit changes resulting from the 2016 arbitration award for the Township Police Association. All other benefits to remain the same, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner John, John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, President Luker. Public Affairs has seven items on the agenda, one of which has been deleted. PA1 is a motion to reject all bids received, and authorize rebidding to construct a new community facility at Crestmont Park, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PA2 has been deleted. PA3 is a motion to approve a seven-year lease extension at Alworthor Manor of the Lubovitch of Abington, effective August 1, 2017, at a base rate of $20,025.21 annually, with all other terms remaining the same, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PA4 is a motion to approve the adoption of the revised policy on the naming and renaming, or dedication of municipal property, buildings, park elements, streets, or other facilities, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PA5 is a motion to approve the acquisition for $1 each, two undeveloped parcels, 30-00-57076-008, and 30-00-57080-001, on Robinson Avenue, off Clearview, through repository sale from the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau, and to authorize the township manager to execute any necessary documents to effectuate that bid. Acquisition contingent on receipt of a favorable title search, and Phase 1 environmental assessment, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? There are none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
DA6 is a motion to advertise a bid for the data center upgrade, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Finally, PA7 is a motion to reject all bids received, and authorize rebidding through pen, pen bid for the Crestmont Park basketball court replacement, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? There are none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner Klein, Vice President, Director of Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on Jay Blumenthal for the Treasurer, Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, everyone. The month of February of 2017, the monies deposited from the various departments into the Republic Bank was a total of $4,107,459, compared to last year of $4,823,359, with a decrease of $715,900. Year-to-date, we have a total of $5,256,641, compared to last year of $6,045,548, with a year-to-date decrease of $788,907. I believe this is because of timing, because if you look at the real estate report, the monies moved up into the Finance Department for February. For the month of February, it was $697,986, which is our first month of collections, by the way, so the year-to-date would be the same, with the remaining balance to collect of $26,418.09. February of '16 was $1,148,274, with a decrease of $450,288. On March 1, we deposited a lot of money, so it was about a one-day variance in timing. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC1, motion to approve investments for the month of January, as previously circulated to the board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $490,000. Interest rate yields ranged from 1% to 1.4%, and I so move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC2, motion to A, approve the January expenditures, as previously circulated to the board, in the amount of $2,597,404.83, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,232,790.33. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of April 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Who's your opponent?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Rockman?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
C. Y.?
Yes.
Heckler?
Yes.
Kralinski?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
C. Y.?
Yes.
Kolesby?
Yes.
Heckler?
Yes.
Kralinski?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
C. Y.?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Kralinski?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
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 Yes.
Bowman?[1538.13] property ordinance, and the fact that the cart is pulling the horse, and that what we have in that vacant property ordinance is a process where the person who has the blighted property and isn't doing the right thing is either going to get a break, or the taxpayers are going to pay for that. Okay? And that is not right. I would like to hope that each of you would have responded to me in some way, clarify to me how you justify that. Okay? Or in some way, explain to me something that I can understand, something other than that this is backwards. If you let the criminal win and the taxpayers lose, the crim, the taxpayers will be paying for the criminals. Okay? It works in the crime, it works in everywhere that you have something bad going on. If somebody else is going to pay for it, it will continue. So if we want to get rid of the blight, we have to put the, the whole burden of it onto the people who are blighting. Same thing with the solicitation laws, same thing with the, the phone calls, the robo calls. Now people are being told to get Nomo robo, which is something they sign up for. And when the call comes in, the call goes to their phone and also to the Nomo robo phone. Okay? And when it does that, Nomo robo has breached, first of all, your privacy. The phone company has very, very sincere privacy rules. Your privacy has been breached, number one. Apparently, Nomo robo is very effective in weeding out who the, the solicitor callers are. And most people who use it do not get a lot of solicitation calls. But why are they doing it? In their fine print is a little paragraph that says, and they do say in the upper print, they say, "We don't sell your information. Nobody can connect it to you." But in the fine print, I just got a paragraph the other day, it says that for 20 years, they own that information, including your black-white lists, including the right to connect it to your name.
All right.
So what we've got is, again, the citizens are paying for the bad guys instead of the other way around.
All right.
We need all of you to do something about that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the public?
Please give us a list.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If there are none, we'll start with comments from the commissioners, starting with Commissioners Spon.
Thank you. This is a note to all the township residents. The Artsy Family Committee will be hosting three events coming up. The first one is the Breakfast with the Easter Bunny, which will be held on April 9th. The next event will be our annual Designer Bag Bingo on April 21st. And the third one will be the annual Oldies Night, which will be held on May 13th. And all these events will be held at the North Penn VFW on Janketan Road in Glen Side. If anybody needs any information or tickets, they can call me. And these events will be open to all residents in the township. We're hosting about eight events this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say congratulations to Sergeant Gillespie and Sergeant Kent, of course, to former Commissioner Kelly. And remind everybody that even though we're about to have some big blizzard or something, this Sunday, don't forget to set your clocks ahead at 2:00 AM or whenever you go to sleep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to have a comment this evening other than to thank the, the sergeants this evening, but since Commissioner DePlacido must have been called away, I did want to say that a, the McKinley Market, the owners, Joe and Joyce, Ty are, have decided to retire and move on to the next phase of their life. So they have sold the business, and it will be reopening under a different name, new owner. But the Ties, tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, are having a ceremonial closing, last day, if you will. So they're looking forward to residents stopping by, you know, their usual regular morning customers to come in and say one goodbye, although I don't think they have any immediate plans to move out of the neighborhood. And I'm sure we will continue to see them around town. But wanted to mention that since Commissioner DePlacido was not here. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Luker. I guess continuing on the theme of Commissioner DePlacido, come join Commissioner DePlacido and I at the McKinley Firehouse this Sunday morning from 8:00 AM until 12:00 for the annual pancake breakfast that benefits the volunteer fire department. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
I would also like to join in congratulating Sergeant Roger Gillespie and Sergeant Drew Kent. And a special thank you to Chief Kelly. If I didn't get choked up, it wouldn't really be a goodbye. A real special thank you to Chief Kelly for all of the years and for taking our police department from a troubled police department to a stellar police department. And Chief Livinggood, I put, I posted on Facebook that we're still in good hands, and I mean it. So we look forward to working for you, with you, for you. And we know that you'll keep up the police department and exactly the way we are used to seeing it. Also, to some of my fellow commissioners, don't pop the cork on the champagne yet. Down, but not out.
Commissioner Markman.
No comment.
Commissioner Schreiber.
Congratulations to Sergeant Gillespie and Sergeant Kent. Thank you. And that's it. That's my remarks for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bowman.
Just to mention the PAL event this Saturday at the Keswick Blackthorne Irish Band will have an event there. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to echo Commissioner Bowman's statements coming down to the Keswick. And congratulations to Sergeant Gillespie and Kent. Two quick things. One, good luck to all the runners at the Copper Beach 5K on Saturday. Unfortunately, I'm working, and I won't be there, but I'm excited that that's, that's happening in the neighborhood. We have a lot of little runners, and that's exciting to see. And then secondarily, I'm excited, I know that at the Pennsylvania State Legislature, they're considering CPR legislation and being involved with the Just Flight Foundation and Little Ali Turner. That is one of the key parts of what we're trying to do. And we're very excited that that is happening and moving forward. We're trying to support it as much as possible. Many of you may be receiving emails from either me or the foundation asking for at least vocal support for that. And we're, we're asking for that through all of our residents, all of our representatives at the higher level. And we're excited to see movement and progress towards that, that legislation. That can save a lot of lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. This is my last chance for the Keep the Parade Running event, which is April 8th at 8:00 in the morning. You have to be there about no later than 7:30. It's great, it's a great run-walk in, in my husband's memory, and it does support the Greater Glen Side Patriotic Association. All the events we have that start at 10:00 in the morning until the fireworks are over on the 4th of July. So hopefully, people will get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Heckler.
Thank you, President Luker. I actually, I also want to, I wanted to congratulate the Abington High School boys and girls basketball teams, both of whom who won the district championships this past weekend. It's a pretty amazing accomplishment to have that happen on one day. And they play this weekend. Both teams are playing at Ben Salem High School. I believe the girls is Friday afternoon, and the boys are playing Saturday afternoon. So congratulations and good luck to both of them. And hopefully, if this makes it to the YouTube channel before Sunday, people will know about it. Actually, there is a fundraiser Sunday afternoon at the Chipotle in the Abington Shopping Center from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. If you come in during that time and mention you're there to support the senior high boys basketball team, 50% of the proceeds will go toward supporting the team. So good luck, ghosts.
Thank you, Commissioner Heckler. Commissioner Kalanowski.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice President Klein.
Just one comment. I would like to urge anybody interested in the zoning ordinance. There is no simple way to explain the changes. We went through extensive videos, I mean, extensive presentations in front of the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners. If you are truly interested in all the changes that were incorporated into the new zoning ordinance, please read the, read or watch the information that is on the website. That is the only way to really understand. There is no simple way to explain it. And we have been going through this process for quite some time. With that, I also wanted to congratulate the, the new sergeants. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo the thanks to the, the basketball teams at Abington High School, the men and the women's that Commissioner Heckler alluded to. And I want to personally thank Vice President Klein for the overview he gave this evening for the Pennsylvania legislation for the medical marijuana, helped break it down and simplify it and explain things very thoroughly. So thank you for that. And also, my thanks to Sergeant Gillespie and Sergeant Kent for their promotion to sergeant. And lastly, congratulations and best wishes to Chief William Kelly for all the years of service he's given us. And congratulations and welcome to Chief Livinggood, and we look forward to good days with you, sir. So if there's no further agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn at this time.
Second.
Thank you for attending and have a good evening.